He's the participant and he is a counterfeiter. There should be a picture on Time Magazine with him flying a helicopter pushing out money.
Congressman.
But they end up, he's helicopter废.
Aloha Maikako, you are watching Hawaii Political Reporter.
Aloha and thank you for watching Hawaii Political Reporter. Tonight, a review of the October 17th Hawaii County Council Agenda, Bills and Resolutions. We'll also find out about the costs of waging a drug war that we're losing. But first, Jill Stein, Green Party Presidential Candidate.
The American system is designed to eliminate political opposition, like some of the, you know, dictatorships that we criticize that have rigged political systems. In many ways, the American system is also rigged, but in ways that are not as straightforward. So you have to actually see what it takes to get on the ballot if you're not already on as one of the big machine parties. Each state has its own set of rules which are very demanding, very detailed and bureaucratic, and require lots of signatures in order to get on the ballot. So for the most part, you need a lot of money, many millions of dollars, to buy your way onto the ballot, basically by hiring signature gatherers and people to keep track of this. We are a real political party, you know? We're not just, you know, the storefront that looks like it's Main Street, but is actually funded by Wall Street. That's what the other political parties are. They pretend to really have public support, but what they really have is the support of the 1%, and then they have a propaganda campaign going on. And one out of every two Americans is now either in poverty or low income. Americans are really hurting and are desperate for solutions which they are not getting. So there is a rebellion that is in full swing. Occupy speaks for that rebellion. We saw in polls early on that a majority of Americans, a substantial majority of Americans, was very sympathetic and supportive of the agenda that Occupy was articulating.
But with the majority.
So Mitt Romney is Wall Street, you know, he's the wolf in a wolf's clothing. Barack Obama is the wolf in a sheep's clothing, but they both essentially have the same agenda. He, you know, he has a lot of sort of machismo and bravado, and he beats the war drum. You know, he wants to, you know, really flex muscle against Iran, but you know, so too does the Obama administration, though they're a little bit more, they're less war mongering about it, but they're basically in agreement about coming down very hard on Iran and holding no options off the table. So they both threaten to use war where we should be using diplomacy.
Hawaii County Council, Order of Business 58 Session, Wednesday, October 17th, 2012, 9:00 AM at the West Hawaii Community Civic Center. So, we will be going over some of the communications, resolutions and bills, and we'll be going in depth on some of them. We'll start off with an overview of what is on the agenda with Communication 880 on page two, a presentation by Helco on efforts to renegotiate purchase power agreements with independent renewable energy power producers pursuant to Resolution 297-12, Draft Two. This is Communication 880 again, and this is from Council Chair Dominic Yagong dated October 11th, 2012, requesting that Helco representatives come before the council to discuss efforts to renegotiate purchase power agreements with renewable power producers, specifically if Puna Geothermal Venture, PGV, was amenable to lowering the price rates and if so, the amount of the new rate. A order of resolution now, we're going on same page two, Resolution 302-12 urges the Hawaii State Legislature to enact legislation to establish sustainable living research sites on parcels less than 15 acres that are designated agricultural under state law in Hawaii. Urges the state legislature to enact legislation to establish sustainable living research sites on parcels less than 15 acres that are designated agricultural under state law in Hawaii. Statutes a sustainable living research site is an area of land on which the legal owners and/or occupants are permitted to engage in activities and erect structures that might otherwise be prohibited or unduly constrained by state and/or county law. This was introduced by Mr. Yagong, and we think it's a great idea. There are a lot of people who could really benefit from this and do a lot of good things to further all of us. Skipping on, we're going to skip some of the resolutions, and we're going to now go to page four, Bill 266 Draft Three. And this is a planning director initiated, amends Chapter 25 zoning code of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition, as amended, relating to agricultural tourism. From Mayor William P. Kanoi, dated May 25th, 2012, transmitting the above bill and enclosures with a favorable recommendation from One Word Planning Commission Chair Zendo Kern and League Word Planning Commission Chair Geraldine Giffen. The amendment specifically relate to agricultural tourism. Amends Article One, subsection 25, 1-5B by amending the definition of agricultural tourism and adds new definitions. Amends Article Two, et cetera, relating to applicability, plan approval required, and application requirements for major agricultural tourism. Amends Article Two, Division Seven, Section 25, 2-76 relating to the action on plan approval application, and amends Article Four, Division, Section, Division One, Section 25, 4-15 relating to agricultural tourism. This was introduced by Mr. Hoffman, first reading on October, excuse me, August 1st, 2012, and this is in Draft Three. And basically, there's a pending motion by Mr. Hoffman and duly seconded by Ms. Ford to approve Bill 266 as amended. So I gather that could be close to passing, must be on at least second reading. And there's a communication, 745-19, from Council Member Brenda J. Ford, dated September 19th, 2012, and transmitted proposed amendments to Bill 266 Draft Three which are contained in this communication. This is on page four of the Hawaii County Council -58 Agenda. Now we're moving on to page five. We have Bill 292, amends Chapter 14, General Welfare Hawaii County, 1983, 2005 edition, amended relating to geothermal drilling. We have to give it to Mr. Yagong. It's really refreshing to see someone, you know, constantly trying to do the right thing for people who are subjected to potentially health-damaging activities of others and certainly unpleasant effects of noise. So this is relating to Chapter 14 again, Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition, as amended relating to geothermal drilling. This is page five of the agenda. It adds a new article, "Geothermal Drilling," as follows. Definitions: For the purposes of this article, the following words and phrases, unless the context otherwise requires, shall be defined as indicated. Residence means a building or a part thereof permitted and designed for use for or used for a home. And one mile means a measurement made from the well bore in a straight line without regard to intervening structures or objects to the property line of the nearest residence. And restrictions: Geothermal resources, exploration drilling, and geothermal production drilling operations being conducted one mile or less from a residence shall be restricted to the operating hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM." This was introduced by Mr. Yagong, and it was introduced first reading on October 3rd of 2012. We would have to note here, even a mile might, and I think Mr. Yagong's trying to be very reasonable here, but you might be surprised, you know, especially with a very low RPM and/or, you know, even the whining, it might even carry further than that, but you know, obviously, he's seeking to try to be a reasonable compromise here. So going on to page five, Bill 294 Draft Two. Amends Ordinance Number 12-87, as amended relating to the public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July 1st, 2012 to June 30th, 2013. No negative or positive comment on my end, except to say that there is a lot of money being spent, and this may be well overdue. Brittany Smart, I know her, and she's usually quite reasonable, and I know the people down there really need this. We are spending a lot of money though, and perhaps the whole budget should be really looked at. Adds Department of Public Works Ocean View Business District Water Infrastructure Improvements, $5,760,000. Funds shall be provided from general obligation bonds, capital projects, fund, fund balance and/or other sources grants, $5,760,000. Funds would be used for the Ocean View Business District Water Infrastructure Improvements, which will bring a buried 12-inch ductile pipe water line to the business district located along Highway 11. This is originally introduced on October 3rd, 2012, and it'd be interesting to find out where the grant source is. I know Brittany's been working on this, and the people down there desperately, of course, water is a very critical thing to have, so it's probably going to be quite a great thing to have done, and especially if she can get a grant for it, that's all the better. So looking at, we're going to skip some other things, Bill 296 on page five, and now we are moving on to Bill 299 on page six. And there's, this is one of several bills introduced by Ms. Ford, possibly by request it looks like, and from the Police Department, and I just have to comment, there is just a lot of stuff constantly going on with the Police Department, and you know, fairly so, and to some extent, because there are a lot of unfortunate things happening out there and people misbehaving, but there is a lot of money being spent here, and constantly looks more and more like a police state with the things that they're being proposed and actually being funded. So going on to page eight, Bill 305. This is amends Chapter Nine, Article Five, Division One, Section 9-33 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition, as amended relating to plans and specifications requirements. The proposed amendments amend Section 933 relating to plans and specifications requirements deviation subsection B by deleting the existing language and adds new language relating to the requirements for the installation of photovoltaic systems. This was introduced by Mr. Yoshimoto, and the first reading was on October 3rd, 2012. We will be going more in depth on to this in a moment. And then we have on page eight, the last of the bills, and this is Draft Two of Bill 307. And authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds of the County of Hawaii for the purpose of funding all or a portion of the costs of various public improvement projects, fixing the form, denominations, and certain other details of such bonds, and providing for their sale to the public, and authorizes the taking of other actions relating to the issuance and sale of bonds. In other words, more debt, more county debt. Maybe, I don't really know, maybe some of these things are well overdue, needed, but we're going to be going into a minute, and I see some very gigantic numbers here, and you know, especially considering that the economy is not going up, and federal budget, and you know, knowing that we have so much of our money coming in from the federal government that is not being generated here, one has to wonder, going into debt, you know, how prudent this really is for certainly all of the projects. Anyways, authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds of the County of Hawaii for the purpose of funding all or a portion of the costs of various public improvement projects, fixing the form, denominations, and certain other details of such bonds, and providing for their sale to the public, and authorizes the taking of other actions relating to the issuance and sale of the bonds. Authorizes the issuance and sale and one or more series bonds of the county in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $30,376,620 for the purpose of funding all or a portion of the costs, including costs of issuance of the bonds of the public improvement projects authorized and set forth as follows. New South Kona Police Station, $16,500,000. Public Safety Complex Repainting, $125,000. Police Records Section Receiving Counter Renovation, $55,000. Na'ah Leahu Police Station Repairs, $75,000. Parking Facilities, Amenities, and Related Improvements in Downtown Hilo, $150,000. Upper Waianui Nui Avenue Safety Improvements, $400,000. Downtown Hilo Accessibility and Mobility Improvements, $200,000. DPR Repairs and Improvements to Facilities, $4,000,000. Repair Hilo Outfall, $1,000,000. Kilawea Avenue Improvements, $4,016,000. Kamehameha Highway Reconstruction, Waialoa Bridge to Punahawai Street, $3,240,000. And bond issuance costs, $615,220 for a total of $30,376,220. Introduced by Ms. Ford. And one thing I definitely have to say, and again, these are all my opinions, and I could be quite wrong on these, and I would appreciate someone emailing me, commenting, wanting to get on, you're more than welcome, please enlighten me if I'm wrong on this. I will say that I have some experience with Ms. Ford, certainly having gone down there, and I do believe she is definitely on top of things, and I do believe she's, I mean, I give her the A for effort, there's no doubt about that, and I'm not, by no means denigrating what she's doing here. I mean, probably some of these things are well overdue and may have been put aside for things that may not have been so necessary, but again, I just have to say, then, and I'm not the expert here, and I wish experts, you know, and of course, this is the beauty of watching on Naleo and going down to, better yet, going down and becoming involved and finding out, because we are spending a lot of money, needed or not, it is a lot of money. Okay, moving on to Bill 292. This is an ordinance amending Chapters 14, General Welfare Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition, as amended relating to geothermal drilling. Be it ordained by the Council of the County of Hawaii, Section One, Chapter 14 Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition, as amended, is amended by adding a new article to be appropriately designated and to read as follows. Article, Geothermal Drilling. Section 14, Definitions: For the purposes of this article, the following words and phrases, unless the context otherwise requires, shall be defined as indicated. Residence means a building or a part thereof permitted and designed for or used for a home. One mile means a measurement made from the well bore in a straight line without regard to intervening structures or objects to the property line of the nearest residence. Restrictions: Geothermal resources, exploration drilling, and geothermal production drilling operations being conducted one mile or less from a residence shall be restricted to operating hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then goes into severability, et cetera. My comment, having worked near there, and again, nothing against any industrialist in the proper zone, this is well needed. There are people within that zone who would be affected. Drilling 24 hours a day near a house is not great. Houses were there prior to the, you know, PGV being established. There's an obvious reason they're there, the resource is there, we understand that, we don't want to penalize them for that, but at the same time, there are human beings living near there. This is truly an industrial, you know, operation, and in a perfect world, it would be put in an industrial zone, and since it isn't, at least fair enough that, you know, things need to be adopted to make it more reasonable, and frankly, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to me is quite obnoxious already. I mean, a lot of people come home from, you know, work, they want to relax, sometimes they want to sleep in. If this thing's going at 7:00, you know, 7:00 AM and one second on Sunday morning, I don't think everybody's going to love it. But hopefully, you know, that's, you know, there's not that many people that close, so hopefully this will do it. Again, we have to thank Dominic, I believe this is his work, yes it is, introduced by Dominic Yagong, and again, a man of the people, looking out for Puna there, and you know, hopefully developments in the future will be put in a further offset from people that these things will not affect them, then they could do their work more efficiently. I used to live myself in Texas, across from drillers and riggers and everything, and you know, it's money, you know, time is money, and they want to work, you know, they've got the overhead, they want to keep going, can't blame them, but they're in the right zone for it, so it doesn't affect people who are just trying to.
900,000 marijuana arrests a year at a cost of tens of billions of dollars while overcrowding our prisons, tying up our legal system, and escalating drug-related crime and border violence. Obama isn't being smart about legalization. Ditto Romney. That leaves me as the last sane man standing on this issue. Be libertarian with me one time, and we'll turn a national drug crisis into a workable
To Bill Number 305. An ordinance amending Chapter Nine, Article Five, Division One, relating to the Hawaii County Code, blah blah, relating to plans and specifications requirements. Be it ordained by the Council of the County of Hawaii, and we're going into Chapter Nine, Article Five, Division One, which is the electrical code of the Hawaii County Code, amended to read as follows. And basically what they're doing here is they are striking, you'll see this on Section 933B, they are striking, "All photovoltaic systems for residential and non-residential installations shall require a building permit. Plans and specifications for building works shall bear the approval of an architect or structural engineer registered in the state of Hawaii. Electrical design drawings and specifications shall bear the approval of an electrical engineer registered in the state of Hawaii." And basically what this is, is recently they introduced the requirement for a second set of plans, a building plans, and a fee, when the fee is still staying there, and they're backing off this a little, they're making the plans don't have to be stamped, this is another time delay and expense in the photovoltaic process. It's still way overdone, especially considering that Honolulu does not require any building permit or any plans, and again, this is Honolulu, and we're doing stricter than them, and there's never been a problem, but I think the building, you know, the department needed the additional permit fee, and you know, not knocking them for that, because frankly, I think their fee was underdone for the electrical side of that, so there's no problems with that, but I still believe this is too bureaucratic, but at least it's somewhat of a step in the right direction. Solar systems here are still too difficult, too slow, but at least some progress is hopefully being made, and hopefully it will not stop further progress, which should really bring the, a lot of this back to zero, because there are many jurisdictions with a system being of a small size that they're totally exempt from many of these things. And you know, again, a commercial, that's something entirely different, you could definitely see it, you know, when the inspection is done, of course, if there's inferior workmanship, it should be caught, you know, regardless of plans or not. I mean, basically, it's simple, pull on the panel, see if they're tight, you know, look at the quality of the work. It really doesn't take that much to do, it's just a little bit of attention. All right, going into Resolution Number 302, in session of 2012. A resolution urging the Hawaii State Legislature to enact legislation to establish sustainable living research sites on parcels less than 15 acres that are designated agricultural under state law in Hawaii, whereas it is widely recognized that increases in human population, declining natural resources, topsoil, forests, fisheries, minerals, and fuels, rising levels of air and water pollution, climate change, unemployment, poverty, and other dangerously disruptive trends require immediate and creative responses by private and governmental entities of all sizes at all levels, and whereas the Hawaii 2050 Plan calls upon all sectors and individuals to take action for the sustainability of the state's economy, resources, environment, and quality of life, and whereas the County of Hawaii Resolution 249-09 adopted the Sustainability Primer, which recognizes that there are structural barriers that actually prevent people from being able to meet their own needs, and whereas many citizens, families, organizations, and communities of Hawaii are ready, willing, and able to develop, test, refine, and implement a wide range of innovative methods, technologies, and holistic systems that increase their productivity, resilience, health, and sustainability of Hawaii economy, ecosystem, people, and culture, and whereas truly sustainable living frequently involves new and innovative methods, technologies, and holistic systems that conserve, harvest, and produce energy, increase net negative CO2 output, forest versus fires, conserve and harvest fresh water, conserve and improve topsoil without expensive or toxic inputs, increase local food quality and security using organic methods and local materials, increase biodiversity and protect wildlife, provide onsite waste treatment and recycling with minimal or zero air and surface or groundwater pollution, increase the supply of affordable housing by using onsite timber and using recycling discarded waste lumber. Windows, plumbing supplies, and other manufactured goods reduce the need for and use of imports from distant places while increasing the use and employment of local materials, labor, skills, and products in rich neighborhood educational, vocational, and cultural opportunities for all ages while enhancing their experience of place and community. Reduce the need for expensive public infrastructures and services. Stimulate private investments in sustainable development, and whereas the development, testing, and refining of the aforementioned methods, technologies, and holistic systems for sustainable living frequently requires activities and structures that Hawaii County governments might not be authorized to permit on lands designated agricultural under state law, and whereas a sustainable living research site is an area of land on which the legal owners and/or occupants are permitted to engage in activities and erect structures that might otherwise be prohibited or unduly constrained by state and/or county law, now therefore. Be it resolved by the Council of the County of Hawaii that the Hawaii State Legislature is urged to enact legislation to establish sustainable living research sites on parcels less than 15 acres that are designated agricultural under state law in Hawaii. Be it finally resolved that the county clerk shall transmit copies of this resolution to the Honorable Governor Neil Abercrombie, the President of Hawaii State Senate, and the Speaker of the State House of Representatives for distribution to all state senators and representatives. Wow. I gotta tell you, I've been involved, this again is of course my opinions, but I've been involved with this issue, I was involved very much with Bill 270 which related to the building code. I am a building professional in the electrical trade, and I can tell you what Dominic is trying to do, and this bill would do, would be just monumentally important, in so many ways, and this is not to knock anybody, we have a system that is set up, I believe, in large part, you know, and nobody's to be blamed here, because this is how all organizations and things tend to go, they tend to go what's what's easiest and most efficient for them and safest, and produces the most revenue for them, but this system of absolutely uniform houses and structures, especially on a essentially worldwide scale now, I mean, because these international codes are coming in and strangling us from the get-go, all the way, from, I mean, making uniform structures for Chicago and Hawaii is just not intelligent. What Dominic's trying to do here would reserve and preserve tremendous amounts of resources, would lower the housing costs dramatically, and would do a lot of good for the land, so I gotta tell you, please people, look at this, investigate it, and also economically, and this goes back to, you know, the whole cycle, but when you really realize that most houses, depending upon how you count it, at least 33, probably 90% of the cost in that house, when you consider all the taxes and the regulations and everything, are not needed, meaning you could build your house for anywhere from 10 to 33, 10 to, yeah, 10 to 33% in most cases, certainly no more than half, especially if the taxes were taken out. I mean, it is just incredible, we are overpaying and are enslaving ourselves to the banks, and this is not by accident. You know, the insurance agencies and banks want us to have a long relationship with them, and that is no easier done than by making a very expensive house that you cannot pay for as you go, and/or cannot afford out of pocket after saving for a few years. And I tell you, this, what's going on in these houses, there's tremendous amounts of waste and overkill, especially for a lot of people. A lot of people retiring out here, they're not needing to build a structure that's going to last 100 years, it's just not needed. So my thanks very much, you know, I must admit that I have been a, I believe, a supporter and somewhat of a friend with Dominic, and I just find this man is tremendous, I'm going to miss him a lot. This is nothing against the mayor, in fact, actually, I think it's great, you know, even, I think it's good to have, you know, conflicting opinions, because it drives things forward and it pushes everybody to be on their sharpest and best and produce the best for the people. And I tell you, Dominic has proven time and time and time and time again that he's going the distance for the people here, especially on this housing, because it is as critical. There are so many people out there who are struggling, and they just, you know, cannot put into this housing what they want, you know, what the county wants, but they can live quite safely and quite cleanly and quite sanitarily and healthy without having to do what the code requires in most cases. And again, back to the sustainability issue on this, because there's really, to me, you know, a whole bunch of issues at play here, being of course, the sustainability, which is absolutely correct, I mean, why not build out of Oheia? You can paint these things with oil-based paints and other things to preserve, you don't have to go and get everything borite treated, especially if it's, you know, in areas and it's well constructed, that you're not going to have termite issues. And you know, of course, the Oheia itself is pretty, you know, it's a pretty damn good wood, if you cut it right and everything. And on top of that, you know, we have, besides the sustainability, we have the affordability, which is will immeasurably help, and then there is also the libertarian argument, which is, you know, if I'm not harming anybody and my safe structure is not unsafe, why not leave me alone instead of trying to make me a roboton?
In 1913, the money power of the country was taken away from the people, but it was given up in the Federal Reserve Act. The Federal Reserve is no more federal than a federal express.
[mimicking singing]
[mimicking singing]